Recording in progress.
The May 28th, 2025 meeting of the Greenville County Planning Commission is hereby called to order. At today's meeting, we will review rezoning applications, subdivision applications, and other items brought to us by staff. Unless the commission members have a question for the applicant, we will not accept additional public comments on the rezoning applications. The rezoning cases were presented at a public hearing, and that was the opportunity to hear public comments in favor of or opposition to the rezoning cases. At today's meeting, the commission will be making its recommendation on the rezoning cases. Detailed information on each of the cases was provided to us in our electronic agenda package in advance of this meeting. Our recommendations will be forwarded to County Council's Planning and Development Committee for their consideration and decision. The subdivision matters we will review today have been reviewed by the Subdivision Advisory Committee. At that meeting, the reviewing agencies presented their preliminary findings to staff. Based upon the comments received at the Subdivision Advisory Committee meeting, and after review of the applicable ordinance sections, staff has formulated contingencies for the preliminary plats. Anyone wishing to address the commission on subdivision matters should have signed up to speak. Again, you cannot address the commission during this meeting on rezoning request. The official public hearing on these cases has already been held. I'm going to do our invocation this evening. Let us pray. Our graciously heavenly Father, we thank you for this day you have given us, for allowing us to serve the citizens of Greenville County, and for giving us safe passage to and from our duties. Please be with each member today to allow us to understand and render the proper decisions. Be with the citizens that are here with us and grant them safe passages as they return to their homes. We ask for your continued blessings upon each of us in our daily lives. In your name we pray. Amen. All right, before we get started, I would like to say thanks to Jim Barberie and John Bailey for all their years of service. This is their last meeting. Thank you both. Just throw money. Congratulations to Deborah Manning on being reappointed, and to our two new planning commissioners, Corey Parme. Are you here? Stand up. Everybody, throw things at him now. And Kenneth Matusavich? Ken, did I say it right?
No.
Okay. I told you I gotta work on that one. Welcome to our two planning commissioners. And one final thing, Mr. Henderson has been promoted Deputy Planning Director and Zoning Administrator. Wasn't much of a clap, was it?
I'll say it right.
I know the feeling. All right, minutes of our last meeting. Anybody have any revisions or changes?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bailey made a motion to approve. Ms. Manning has a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, rezoning request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon. My name is Todd Baxley. This is a brief explanation of the planning commission process to consider rezoning cases. Each docket will be presented, including the requested zoning, specific details of the site, as well as maps and photos of the site and surrounding area. Presentation will conclude with the staff recommendation. Staff recommendation is a result of feedback from a team of internal and external county stakeholders who review each case. After each presentation, the planning commission may either vote with or against staff's recommendation in addition to offering any additional amendments to the recommendation. All items forwarded from today's meeting will be heard by the Planning and Development Committee in person in the committee room in the North Building, which is scheduled for June 2nd, 2025, at 5:30 PM. Our first docket tonight was CZ-2025-029. That application has been withdrawn by the applicant. The next docket is CZ-2025-030. Property is located at 317 Rocky Creek Road in Simpsonville. The applicant is Amber Hathaway Pierce of Oakwood Homes for Gary McGill Chandler and Edna K. Chandler. The 1.9 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately 0.07 miles east of the intersection of Rocky Creek Road and West Georgia Road. Currently contains a single wide manufactured home. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned PD, Plan Development District. The request is for RS, Residential Suburban District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is a single wide manufactured home. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that the requested rezoning to RS Residential Suburban District would allow the parcel to turn back to its original zoning district and permit consistent land uses within the surrounding parcels. Additionally, based on historical imagery, it appears the property has been used as a single-family residential since 1997. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval of the requested rezoning to RS Residential Suburban District. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for staff commissioners? Any discussion or motion?
Make a motion to approve.
You're hot tonight.
I'll second.
Mr. Bailey made a motion to approve. Ms. Manning has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes got it. Next one, sir.
The next docket, CZ-2025-031. Property is located at 2726 Fork Shoals Road in Piedmont. The applicant is Philip R. Dean of PRD Properties LLC for Douglas E. Sprayberry and Kimberly D. Sprayberry. The 13.64 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately 1.09 miles south of the interchange at Fork Shoals Road and Interstate 185, and currently contains single-family residential and vacant land. This is zoning the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned RS Residential Suburban District. The request is for S1 Services District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is RV, boat, and self-storage facility. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that successful rezoning to S1 Services District would not be consistent with the Planned Greenville County Comprehensive Plan designation of rural living, nor that it be consistent with the South Greenville Area Plan designation of Transitional Residential. Based on these reasons, staff recommends denial of the requested rezoning to S1 Services District. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Baxley. Commissioners, any questions?
I'll jump, I'll jump right in on this.
Mr. Wood, go ahead.
Go back to the picture if you will, please. Thank you.
The, this one?
Yeah, that right there. I ride by this, I don't know, four times a day, six, 12, whatever it is, that we have to go through there a lot. I'm not quite following how, on one spot, he's already got a storage unit, and we saying that he can't put it on land that he already owns. How is it, how are we squaring that? Because how is the one that's already there okay? How is it that the one that's a mile down the road, that's twice as big as the one he's wanting to build, how is that one okay? You understand what I'm saying? We're, we seem like we splitting hairs on this, and we're not, you know, it's not, and trust me, I'd rather see this than a housing development, all day long. Man walking here, housing develop, he come in here, says we go build a housing development, you know, we go all Bart like seals, hey, that's great, let's build a housing development. Yes, we got, they something, how did you come to the conclusion that this is not what can be done?
Right, so, the zoning of the property at the moment, so the portion that you see that's currently zoned to S1 there?
Mm-hmm, S1.
That was initial zone to S1 back in 1996, whenever this whole area was initial zone. Most of the surrounding was initial zone to RS. Since then, we have a much more recent area plan for that, the South Greenville Area Plan, and then we also have a much more recent Comprehensive Plan that was established in 2020. Both of those plans are calling for residential in this area, more lower-density transitional residential, which is what staff based its decision.
The one thing we don't need on that road is more residential anything, nothing. Well, I mean, it's, you can't get through there. And I know that's not our problem, that's nobody's problem, that's DOT situation. We are struggling. I'd rather see this go in there where the people, because if not, all these people that's got the houses that we continually talk about, we're saying we can't, you know, they can't have something in the driveway. Everybody down there's basically got a boat, or a RV, or something, they gotta have somewhere to put them. I mean, I'm of the, I don't know about the rest of the folks, how they vote, I'm of the opinion that, I feel y'all made a mistake on this one, and I'd like to see it overturned to where the man could build on what he's got with it.
Okay, Mr. Wood. Mr. Bailey.
Real quick, in summary, unless we start putting in some commercial sectors like S1, then everybody's gotta drive all the way back across town, and that's gonna mean zero relief for traffic. So, stuff like this is a necessity out there. I know you can have a little bit of a not in my backyard type thing, but until we build a little bit of these commercial centers to where some businesses, or boats, RVs, but a lot of businesses store in those type of things, and that helps prevent traffic further down the road, so I'll be a yes on this.
All right, anybody else have any questions, comments?
Have you got a question?
Oh, Ms. Manning.
I have to agree. I think that allowing that property to perhaps go into townhomes or apartments doesn't make any sense. Right next door is the storage unit, and why in the world, no one is going to, you know, a single-family residence is not going to be built on that particular piece of property. So, I'm with you guys. I'm with you guys.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hammond. May I make a motion, please? Wait a minute, Ms. Franklin.
I was gonna do the same thing.
You go ahead.
Well, I'd like to make a comment. I agree, I think this, I don't think the arguments against this were so much because of the RV storage facility, it was how close are they gonna be to my property, and is there anything screening me from this? Because there are residential properties there, so it is understandable. Unfortunately, you can't, you can't include that when it comes into this straight zoning to say, hey, you've gotta put, you know, all this stuff here, you depend on the developer. So, I agree. RVs would be less traffic and less intrusive, but if you were living next door, and they were right up to your backyard...
They're on both sides of them.
No, wait a minute.
They're on both sides.
Believe me, they, between the 25-foot and all the screening and the buffering that's required between this and residential...
You think it'll block the lights?
Oh, yes. Well, you're not gonna see the lights, that, I mean, that'll be a...
You have to show a lighting plan.
You gotta show a lighting.
You do have to show a lighting plan.
Yeah, but as far as visually seeing them, I don't think you're gonna see them, based on the topo I know of.
CISA didn't have to show a lighting plan back in the day, so, I understand your argument, though.
Oh, here we go again.
Those are just my thoughts on that.
All right. Mr. Hammond, jump back in here.
I'll report Ms. Franklin.
All right, Ms. Franklin.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we do not accept the staff's opinion and allow them to move forward with this, and include at least a 25-foot buffer.
No, that's in the ordinance. It's, it's, we don't need to say a word, believe me. I've been there. I second. I totally. Ms. Franklin. All right. Ms. Franklin made a motion to approve and not accept staff's recommendation. Mr. Holland has a second. Any further discussion? I must say, once S1, always S1. We're trusting him to do storage here. If it becomes anything else, Ms. Franklin will come looking for you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any of those two, to deny? Say no. All right, it's approved, 9-0.
The next docket is CZ-2025-032. The property is located at 1801 Rutherford Road, Delmar Avenue, Sunnydale Drive, and East Bellevue Road in Greenville. The applicant is Nathan Kirkman of DNK Development for UCP Hettle Greenville LLC. The 50.049 acre subject property consists of two parcels and is located approximately 1.1 miles northeast of the intersection of Rutherford Road and North Pleasantburg Drive. Currently contains an industrial and business use development. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned I-1 Industrial District and S1 Services District. The request is for PD Plan Development District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states the proposed land use is a mixed-use development. The applicant is proposing to allow the development of residential and additional commercial uses on their existing site. Uses allowed on the site would be those permitted in the S1 Services District with some exceptions, as well as other uses such as multifamily and single-family attached residential, retail and industrial service. New townhomes would be two to three stories and range from 1,500 to 1,800 square feet. Multifamily structures would be podium style over one level of parking. Materials would include brick, metal, and residential siding. There would be three full-access entrances off of Rutherford Road, Delmar Avenue, and East Bellevue Road. Parking will be shared across the development with new five-foot sidewalks installed at Long Street frontages. There would be a 25-foot external landscape buffer where the property butts a residential parcel, and a minimum of 10 acres of open space. Signage would adhere to the Greenville County sign ordinance. Lighting would be a maximum of 16 feet and full cutoff. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that the request for PD Plan Development District for mixed-use development would not be consistent with the Planned Greenville County Comprehensive Plan designation of industrial. This land use designation does call for warehousing, manufacturing, highway, commercial, and open space, but does not include residential development. Staff also has concerns about the viability of the Rutherford Road access point, which would require the construction of a right-turn lane adjacent to a railroad. Additionally, the preliminary development plan shows the residential component to be built on the western side of the property with the closest road access off of Delmar Avenue, a relatively narrow local road. The alternative would be for residential vehicles to pass through the commercial-industrial areas of the site to utilize other accesses, potentially causing internal congestion. Based on these reasons, staff recommends denial of the requested rezoning to PD Plan Development District. Mr. Chairman.
All righty, thank you, sir. Any questions for staff?
I do have at least one question, probably more, and this is probably to the applicant, I guess. Those of y'all that were at the public hearing last week or were zoomed in on it, it was a rather unique back-and-forth between council and the applicant. I'll leave it at that. And the applicant obviously had, I think, up to 600 units in their plan development application, and there was discussion about that being less than 600. And I'd just like to hear from the applicant if that, anything happened with that conversation post-last Monday evening, if the applicant's here.
Come on down, name and address. During rezonings, if we request that we can, ask the applicant to come forward.
Good afternoon. Nathan Kirkman, 41 Cornelia Street, Atlanta, Georgia. Yes, so, after the back-and-forth, you know, I was not in position there on the spot to be able to, you know, answer any sort of questions about reduction in unit count, you know, given that I'm only part of the ownership group, and so, you know, immediately after that meeting, you know, we had a little pow-wow, and, you know, we want to compromise, and so we basically, within an hour, you know, had an email that we shot out to Councilman, I think, McGahey, and he's the one that requested, you know, he's like, email me directly. So, we did, and, you know, basically, put out a number of 450, which is a 25% kind of unit count, unit, unit reduction. And, you know, with that would be a 25% reduction in traffic count, you know, prime trips, all of that type of stuff, you know. We, we reached out to our traffic engineer within the last 24 hours after receiving the, kind of, the request for, or the motion for denial, and, you know, had him kind of relook at it with the, the reduction in, in unit count, and, you know, again, it's, it kind of follows a straight line and be a 25% kind of reduction. And he also said, you know, the right-turn lane that is mentioned in, that these guys mentioned, that's in the traffic study that, you know, that we had done by the engineer, you know, they feel that with that 25%, you know, it would lessen the, you know, the need for the study, I guess is what, as it's called in the, you know, in the, in the, in their report.
Mr. Hammond.
Well, I guess maybe a staff question now, if the applicant has agreed to reduce the residential count by 25% from 600 to 450.
That's correct, yes.
And you've corresponded with at least one council member?
It was Councilman Shaw, which is the council for the district. McGahey was the one that had the back-and-forth, and then, you know, we copied staff as well on, you know, on kind of our proposal for an amendment. I don't, you know, I'm not sure how the process works, and so that's, you know, we threw it out there as to what our next steps, we don't know.
Well, that's my question. And I'm not, I'm not gonna sit here and negotiate with staff like the council member tried to negotiate with the applicant last week, so I thought that was inappropriate. But how, if, if the applicant is willing to make a not insignificant change in the housing count from the public hearing to tonight, how does, how do, how do the nine of us view that, review that, treat that?
So, there are a couple of ways. As planning commission, you are able to set conditions, you know, similar to how if you move a review district forward, you can establish conditions for it. So, if the applicant was willing to come down on their number, you could potentially pass it forward with that condition added. Alternatively, you know, once it got to PND or to council, they could also add that addition or send it back for public, additional public comment, and give the community a chance to, to review their revised number and see how they feel about that as well.
I've got a couple of questions, real quick. Let's say 10 years from now, residential's just gone bonkers. If you were to come back and say, I want to tear down building number four and put in residential, isn't that a major change?
If it's not already covered in their statement of intent, if they're trying to add more residential than was approved, then yes, it would be a major change.
All right, but any of these residential units, don't we see them all if they're, if they're for sale and subdivided?
That, yes, that's correct. To my knowledge, there's no plan to subdivide the townhomes, or the, not townhomes, but the individual housing that I'm aware of, is that...
Are they all rental?
You know, until we get in and really do a, you know, kind of a more in-depth market study, you know, we wanted to leave ourselves flexibility of these being a, you know, rental product or a for-sale product. I mean, we haven't made that determination as of yet.
So, if it is decided that they were to subdivide, then yes, that subdivision, the residential component will come before you.
Right.
So, your point is we'd see a preliminary plat at that point?
Yeah, yeah. But I'm still a little iffy. If you read PD, it's supposed to be well-defined. Planned development, not what we think about a year from now or five years from now. I thought these units were gonna be for sale, and, you know, just to be rentals or sold, I mean, you don't know at this point. Granted, that doesn't change the traffic much, but it still sort of goes against the grain of planned development definition, doesn't it, staff? Put you on the hook too, say.
I don't think that, sorry, I don't think that that would weigh in on whether or not, you know, staff changes its, its recommendation or conclusion, whether or not it's for sale or for rent properties.
Okay.
You know, our, our recommendation comes off of the initial submittal, which was the 600 or so units that were submitted. Changing that through the process, you know, we, our, our standpoint, our viewpoint stays the same, because we're gonna be consistent all the way through. What planning commission sees is our recommendation's gonna be the same thing as what PND sees.
I understand.
If, if the planning commission wishes to make, to allow it to move forward with an approval and put that condition, that's, you know, definitely up to, up to the commission.
Yeah, but you didn't, we used to get the statement of intent.
It's in here.
It's in there.
It's in there.
It's here.
It should be.
It is.
It is.
Okay, I missed it, sorry.
But you, I would agree, you're correct. There's a lot of flexibility in that statement of intent.
Yeah.
So, I have a question, I don't know if this is for the applicant or for staff. What type of environmental study has been done on this property to make sure it's safe to build on for residential use, with this being a former dye and other things that they did for the textile industry?
I gotta object, I don't think that's our purview.
It's, it's not our purview.
Well, it's not, but you're, you're talking about people living here, and if, has this been looked at to be environmentally safe for people to live there?
The answer to your question is, it, it has been looked at.
And what were the findings?
And the findings are that, you know, there are conditions that would need to be met, you know, that's, you know, there will be mitigation that has to be done for residential. But, you know, again, that's, that's very clearly spelled out, and, you know, it's, it's pretty black and white, what, what will need to be done. And it's, it's not, it's not significant, but yes, there are some things that...
Forgive me, I can give my name and address, I'm his partner.
Yes, please do, for the record.
For the record, forgive me. My name is Douglas Kirkman. I live at 4 Unity Alley, Charleston, South Carolina. I am partner with Nathan, as well as being brothers, in UCP Hettle. And with respect to this, this is a brownfield site. This has been under DEHEC's control since, give or take, 1986, when the Steel Hettle Company existed and continued through the bankruptcy. We have a voluntary cleanup contract with DEHEC. So long as we have it, as it currently exists today, back to the original question of for rent or for sale, it can be for rent only, because title must remain as a singular title. There is the possibility that we could clean up soil in two different areas, and with so doing, remove the condition around rental only. If we got to that point, we would be back around subdivisions and all of that, if that was ever an intent of ours. In the meantime, the intent is for rental workforce housing of the types that we're put for. Forgive me for stepping forward, but this is the stuff that I do for us, and...
No, that's fine, but, but, but what he's saying is correct. If, if they were to be for sale, it would have to come back before someone for, for a major change.
So, or a subdivision.
Or a subdivision.
And/or so.
But a subdivision wouldn't be a major change.
Yeah.
There'd be a preliminary plat approval.
Yeah, that wouldn't necessarily be a major change.
No, it'd be one or the other. Any other questions, Mr. Holland?
No, sir.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question for staff.
Ms. Phillips?
Am I correct in presuming that only that right-turn lane was going to be required despite the number of potential residential?
So, there would actually be several mitigation...
There was...
No, the DOT...
And are all these access roads state roads?
No, one of them's counted.
All of the access points are off of state roads.
Oh, really?
Let's see, so there would need to be the right turn, the westbound right-turn lane off of Rutherford Road, there would need to be signal operation improvements at the intersection of, let's see if I can get my mouse to work here. So, where East Bellevue runs into Rutherford, there is a railroad here that is prior to that intersection, so there would need to be some signal, signal oper, signal operation improvements is what DOT has said here. If for some reason they weren't able to get the westbound right turn off of Rutherford, then that could flow even more traffic to East Bellevue, which would then have to be re-reviewed, which I believe that could potentially, that could potentially trigger another major change, because they may have to modify that main Rutherford access, because I think their current traffic impact study had about 60 or 70% of their traffic coming through that entrance.
All right, commissioners, any other questions? I'm, I'm of the opinion, I think staff's correct at the moment on this one. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, based on a lot of the ideas that have been put forward here, and what I think is best for the future of this community, I'd like to make a motion to approve this based on the reduction of housing and the... I think is best for the future of this community, I'd like to make a motion to approve this based on the reduction of housing and the, really the idea that they're really putting forward a heck of a step to cleaning this place up, something that's been under DEHAC control. This is a huge ask of the developer to make this into something that's a more presentable piece of this community over here. So for that, I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
With the condition of the reduction to 450 residential units?
Obviously, definitely because of the reduction to 450 units, yes.
Trying to be definitive, Mr. President.
Yes.
Is there a second for this motion?
I'll second the motion.
All right, Mr. Hammond has a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor to approve, raise your hand. All those wishing to go with staff's recommendation to deny, raise your hand. All right, it's recommended denial, five to four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment? I think this is a...
About what?
That application. I think it, it has potential.
It does. It, it just has to be better defined in my mind. All right, next one.
The next docket is CZ-2025-033. The property is located at 210 Earl Drive and Larry Court in Greenville. The applicant is Kamala Desore of Adams Recycling for R&amp;K Equity LLC. The 9.005 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately 0.21 miles west of the intersection of Earl Drive and White Horse Road, Highway 25. Here it contains vacant land. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is zoned RN20, multifamily residential district. Their quest is for AG Agricultural Preservation District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states their proposed land use is agritourism. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that a successful rezoning to AG Agricultural Preservation District would not be consistent with the Riverdale-Tanglewood Community Plan designation of mixed use, nor would it meet the intent of the AG Agricultural Preservation District, which was created to preserve prime farmland and forestry areas. Based on these reasons, staff recommends denial to requested rezoning to AG Agricultural Preservation District. Mr. Chairman?
All right, thank you, Mr. Baxley. Any questions for staff?
I've got a question.
You always do.
Mr. Chairman, um, how long, I mean, can they apply?
Forever, yes. I can answer that.
As long as their request is for a less intense use, then they can reapply after denial. If they withdraw the request, I believe that's six months.
Six months, yeah.
And if it's denied, they can't apply for the similar or more intensive for at least a year.
Any cleanup or abatement been done to satisfy the residents?
They are in the process of cleaning up the property, so we have some enforcement action against the property. They've been working with our enforcement staff who have a routine site checkup schedule that they're maintaining to make sure that there is continued process of cleaning up the property.
And that's been a positive response? Has that failed or?
I, I haven't had, I haven't had a conversation with you or any of y'all about this since yesterday. I sat down yesterday and re, uh, looked at all the pictures that have been taken by our code enforcement and zoning enforcement officers that have been out on site. And they're taking, taking pictures, standing in the same spots, same angles each time to make sure that, that, you know, the progression is showing correctly. And, you know, there are some areas that appear to be less cluttered, but that's because some of the material is pushed up on top of other material that is there. So it, you know, it was provided that it just, you know, there, there's some progress that has been made, yes, but to the amount that is bringing it into compliance with the enforcement action, it is my interpretation of that, that it has not really risen to that level at this point.
I mean, I would say this GIS photo looks a little different than, I think, previous ones we've seen. It appears to be less material, obviously still cluttered, but, you know, there was some high-volume accusations we had from the residents over there talking about getting same forms of cancer and whatnot. Just was curious as to, and this is non-conforming, right?
That's correct. Yes, that was, it's, it's never received a certificate of occupancy to utilize this property in this manner. For quite some time, it has been just allowed for some reason. It's not, it's not been enforced. You can progressively go through our aerial photography and you can see, and I don't hold me to the exact dates, but around maybe 2016, you see all the trees were, were cut down. There was no land disturbance permit for that obtained. There have been building permits submitted that were never called in for inspection, so those have lapsed. So there's never really been, you know, the follow-through of the, the cleanup that's supposed to have taken place on this property.
How recent is this GIS photo? Do we know?
I don't, it's this year.
It is since the first of the year.
I, I think they fly around February, March somewhere.
Yeah, early. Let Mr. Bailey...
Is there not a precedent to, or does the county not have any teeth in this matter to, for, you know, for this thing to get into compliance before any more applications? Or is it just you can keep submitting even though they're in violation?
So, so if you remember back a couple of years ago, we did a text amendment to the zoning ordinance that kind of changed that process.
Right.
It used to be if you submitted a rezoning application, it stayed in the enforcement action. Now, we tweaked that provision to where you, you get like one get out of jail free card, essentially. You get one application that stays that violation to help you out if someone that just doesn't know what the situation is and they're needing a little bit of time, they're going to try to rezon it, they have that ability. But it's not to be abused like it's been in the past. So we, we will, we will continue to move on with enforcement action on this property regardless of an application for rezoning has been submitted. So, you know, our attorneys are working with the property owners' attorneys to come up with the best course of action where we move forward, but it is in the hands of enforcement right now and it is still moving forward in that manner.
Ms. Manning, thank you for raising your hand.
Okay, so let me get this straight. I'm a little confused. So we're looking at a junkyard here?
No, ma'am. You're looking at what is a salvage yard on some portions of the surrounding properties as well as a, a junkyard. There's this kind of a pick apart kind of thing where you can actually go and pull parts off of vehicles and, you know, buy, buy parts and stuff.
Okay.
But then there's a junkyard salvage yard component where you can go and actually salvage the, you know, and recycling and things of that nature.
Okay. And they, and they want to put cows and sheep on this property?
So the property in question...
Has anybody talked to the cows and sheep about this?
So the, the property in question has never actually had a salvage yard on it. There's been no, no, there's not been a building there that's been salvaging material like on the other properties. This property has been more used as kind of a dump site, holding area for the scrap material that is to be junked or salvaged or whatever it may be onto other properties. So that's what it's been used for. To answer your question about the agricultural aspect of it, that was one of staff's concerns, is that doing the things that are agricultural in nature on this property with the history of this property could very well be problematic.
Would, would you perhaps say that we're being played here?
I, I won't, I, I wouldn't say it.
I can say that.
I'd say one way or another on that.
But I find it just very interesting that, how many times has this property gone, has this owner come before the planning commission?
Can you just make a motion and let's move on, please?
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we accept the staff denial.
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Manning made a motion to deny, was that Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Made the second. Any further discussion? All in favor to deny, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right, denied, and oh. That takes care of the resignings. We have...
Nothing short about your discussion.
I'm pretty sure it's his last chance.
DEHAC will be in there setting this thing up, I'm pretty sure.
Give us a few minutes so staff can set up. That's a record. I'll do what Ben... I don't think so. No. It's just twinkle, twinkle, crap. Hello?
Do you all have a lawsuit?
We do now, yes.
Have you heard him state?
I am, finally. All right, this is PP 2025-50, Brown Haven Point. Brown Haven Point is a proposed subdivision located south of Cambridge Drive. The applicant is requesting 23 lots on 5.25 acres for a density of 4.38 units per acre. Access is provided off of Cambridge Drive. Here's the site outlined in red. And here is Cambridge Drive looking east and looking west. Here's the site plan that was submitted in your packets. The project includes one full ingress egress point, one internal road with cul-de-sac, one cluster mailbox unit with a parking area that includes five parking spaces, 20-foot undisturbed screening buffers around the perimeter of the site, sidewalks per the ordinance, one detention pond, 533 linear feet of new public road, and .79 acres of open space. Here's the zoning of the site on the screen. The subject site is part of the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan where it is designated as suburban neighborhood. This character area type recommends a density of three to five dwelling units per acre. Brown Haven Point proposes 4.38 dwelling units per acre. Here is the site and across the street from the site. And here are comments provided at SAC. From subdivision administration, open space should touch a majority of lots and in a meaningful proportion, as well as be as contiguous as possible. Staff recommends approval of the plan with the standard and specific requirements. Mr. Chairman?
All right, thank you, ma'am. Nobody signed up in opposition, so we're going to go ahead and go with in favor, Ryan You get 10 total minutes. Give me your name and address, please.
Ryan Lassiter, Freeland and Associates, 323 Weston Avenue, just here on behalf of the engineering firm. Think it's pretty straightforward, but any questions that we can answer or try to?
Any questions for the engineer?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Manning.
So, these units are 34 feet across, is that correct?
Right, that's what the plan shows here, yes, ma'am.
And 175 feet deep?
Uh, yeah, 170, 175, depending on which one.
Okay, and then the open space is how deep?
Measured from the property line into the lot, is that what you're asking?
Well, usable, usable open space.
Is how deep?
Yeah, I mean, how, how much space does somebody have if they bought one of these units?
Well, you have the 20-foot open space perimeter around there, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, so it's 20 feet?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
No, but that's undisturbed buffer.
Undisturbed buffer.
You can't count that as open space.
So are you, are you counting, are you counting that as, as open space?
Yes, in the calculations, yes.
But you can't do that?
Yes, you can.
You can?
Yeah.
All right.
Any other questions? I'm still a little confused as to the required open space must be directly accessible to the largest practical number of lots within the development. I, I don't see anything in the middle or anything like other people might do in this cluster design.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we meet the technical requirements of it, but I understand the comment.
Yeah. I have another quick question. Where'd it go?
Oh, but it is, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a short, short road, small area, so it'd be hard to pack open space in the middle there.
I don't think so. Staff, GIS, how accurate is it?
I mean, it's approximate, it's not 100% accurate.
Plus or minus 10 feet.
Plus or minus 10 feet, I've always been told.
That's probably about right.
Okay. Well, I just, open space required .79, open space provided .79. That doesn't cause you any grief?
If the engineer put their stamp on it, then that's what they're providing.
Good point. Any other questions? I just, only because it's an infill, would I allow, in my mind, I would agree to something like this. But I'd like to ask, would you be willing to delete, I can barely read it, I think it's lots 22 and 23 to increase the open space? So we don't have this .79 stuff?
I can't commit to that, it could be discussed, yes, sir.
Well, like I said, only because it's an infill, it's not one of your best cluster designs by no means, but I would go along with it if, if we could get a little bit more open space for everybody. Is there anybody here you can talk to?
The owner is here, if he would like to share anything.
With the owner?
So you want to comment on that?
Steve, you asked for two lots to be deleted?
Yeah.
For, what's the mathematical equation on that?
Just to get the open space?
Meaningful proportions.
What's the black and white equation on that?
Again, if this was any other location, this would, I, I just would say it's against the Article 11. But here, because it's infill, I, I think it's not a, it's a pretty good use. I just would like to see a little bit more open space other than that giant retention pond. I'm just asking.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Bailey?
How many tenths of an acre is each lot of 22 and 23 nature?
Acres of the lot?
What's the square footage?
Yeah, so it's, they're both 58, 46, so...
What's it, what's that in tenth of an acre? So how much over the .79 would you be in positive nature?
So, that's not even a quarter.
They're .13 acre, .134 acre lots each, so .26 if you took both.
So if you did one lot, would that keep...
No, I still think one, two lots, a quarter of an acre to add to that open space, which I think, you know, based on the design, is not that unreasonable. I understand yield, I understand the dollars, I understand all of that, sir. I believe me, but I just, look at the size of the lots surrounding this. I mean, for infill, I grant you, I think this is not a bad design. And you very rarely will hear me say that. So, I mean, I'm just asking for those two lots. And again, that might not fly with the rest of my compadres here. I mean, you know...
We're not prepared to make a decision on that.
Yeah, I think it'd be hard to make a, a call on her here in this moment.
Okay. Well, I mean, we can make a contingent and then you can come back to staff later, and if you want to bring it back, you can bring it back. But again, I, it, there's eight others here. I'm just, is there any other?
I, I would say that... I, I would say that the open space is not feasible. It is not at all directly accessible to the most number of lots. There, there's cost of development, but I think there could be a design infill here that, that did well, maybe without using the open space cluster.
What is the zoning?
But given that that is what's requested... I believe that it doesn't meet the requirements of LDR 11.1, 11.3, .2, and 11.4.
Is that for?
So you...
Does not.
Is that open space?
Yes. Would you, so, if they agreed to my request, you'd still wouldn't go along with that?
No.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else of that same opinion?
I, I'd like to say something, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bailey?
I think that particular note, I think that particular note, outside of council going back and redoing their plans on that, currently, the county attorneys say that they agree with staff on the current definition, which means 20-foot is accessible. The UDO was supposed to fix that and say that 20-foot is accessibility, um, so...
Did you note staff's comment?
Refresh my memory.
What road are you going down, but read that? You got me all confused. I mean, I typically would agree with her, but because this is a, a smaller infill, I'm willing.
I'm with you.
And I think it's not a bad design for this area.
In a workshop we had a few years ago, they, they said that, you know, they agreed with staff's idea of cluster. I, I feel Steve on his idea there, but I think that's something that council needs to go right into the, uh, you know, if council would go change ordinance, then we could apply it, and not have to come up with our own personal ideas each time here, but, um, you know, the county plan votes for infill, and so I'd, I'd have to say, until council goes and rewrites the ordinance, you know, you got to go with us.
Huh? Why would I have to? I didn't read the infill chapter. When did, when did they say this?
We had a workshop with Chris Antley and Mark Talison, and they said they agreed with staff's current definition of open space.
That's not the question, all right. Any other questions, comments?
Well, we, we find ourselves in this position practically every month.
Yeah.
And, and it gets back to table 11.1 in the LDR, table 7.1 in the zoning code, it gets back to 11.4 in the LDR about open space, largest practical number of lots within the development. Okay, but largest practical number of lots within development is not a black and white number, it's not a calculatable number, it's not a quantifiable number, it's a subjective number. And I'm not an engineer, I'm not a planner, so I have to put some confidence and some trust in the county staff as to knowing what is correct to interpret and what's not correct to interpret. And staff's recommendation is to approve this. Um, I'm not a fan of negotiating a reduction in lots at, at this meeting, if, if everybody wants to agree to it, that's fine. But we, we get in the same discussion every single month, and it's a non-productive discussion. And I hear people refer back to the table 7.1, 11.4, whatever it is, 11.1, 7.1, those are the tables in the ordinance. That's the table in the LDR, it's the table in the zoning code. You can disagree with it, but it's not what's in the LDR, and it's not what's in the zoning code. So if you, if you're basing any decision on 7.1, 11.1, you're in the wrong, and probably not a good place to be if the applicant wants to sue the county. Because that is black and white.
That's not what, you don't need to be saying that either.
It is black and white, it's in the code, you can disagree with it all you want, but it's in the code.
Yeah, the planning commission shall determine if the preliminary plan is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning.
But it's, but it's been brought up numerous times, I don't agree with 7.1, I don't agree with 11.1, I don't care if you agree with 7.1 or 11.1, it's in the code and it's quantifiable. Now, there is subjectivity on behalf of planning commission, I will totally agree with that.
Quantifiable?
And...
Okay.
And if, if we're going to get back to directly accessible, largest practical number of lots, what, what is the largest practical number of lots? Every lot in this plan is accessible to open area, every single lot. If your definition is not practicable, largest number, that's your definition. I, I don't agree with it, um, I agree with staff's recommendation, it's an infill lot. The, the amount of infrastructure that's got to be put in here for these few lots to remove two of them on a application that staff has recommended approval, the engineers worked with staff, they've gone back and forth, I'm sure they've talked, I'm sure they've taken, we do this, we do that, um, they've approved this, or they're recommending approval of it, um, and I, I feel like it ought to be approved as well.
All right, Mr. Hammond, any other comments, questions for the applicant? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny, based on LDR 11.1, 11.3, .2, and 11.4, and note that home sites are to be clustered to preserve open space for recreational, environmental, or ecological reasons. It looks like maybe the 20-foot buffer has some mature trees possibly, but I don't see where any of those are being granted, and I'm not sure what you can do in .19 acres of open space.
All right, Ms. Phillips made a motion to deny based on those three sections of Article 11 of the LDR, can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Holland has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor for the motion of denial, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. It is denied, six to three. Thank you. Next application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is PP 2025-51, Logan Reserve. Logan Reserve is a proposed cluster option one subdivision located north of Devinger Road, which is a state road. The applicant is requesting 100 lots on 37.26 acres for a density of 2.68 units per acre. Access is provided off Devinger Road. Here is the site outlined in red. And here is Devinger Road looking east and looking west. Here's the plan that was submitted in your packets. The project includes one full ingress egress point, one emergency access, five internal roads, one stub out for future connectivity, one cluster mailbox unit within a parking area that includes three parking spaces, 20-foot screening buffers around the perimeter of the site, sidewalks per the ordinance, two detention ponds, 4,791 linear feet of new public road, and 5.59 acres of open space. Here is the zoning of the site. The subject site is part of the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, designated as suburban neighborhood. The suburban neighborhood character area type recommends a density of three to five dwelling units per acre. Logan Reserve proposes a density of 2.68 units per acre. Here is the site and across the street from the site. And here are SAC comments that were provided at last month's meeting. From subdivision administration, open space should touch a majority of lots and in a meaningful proportion, as well as be as contiguous as possible. From land development, this proposed development is part of one original parcel owned by Edwards Road Baptist Church, thus all part of a larger common plan as defined by EPA. It appears to be some type of recreation facility, as long as the church does not have plans to further divide the original parcel, we will not require a master stormwater plan for the entire parcel. This is to be addressed as, as needed and at land development permitting phase. At 100 lots, a traffic impact study was required for Logan Reserve per LDR table 9.1. The TIS analysis included the following, a turn lane analysis was conducted utilizing the build 2028 volumes. Based on buildout volumes, no turn lanes are warranted at the site. The capacity analysis indicates that operations at the signalized intersection of Hudson Road and Devinger Road under boat conditions are expected to be similar to no boat conditions with some minor increases in delay. At the unsignalized intersection of Shady Lane and Hudson Road, the eastbound approach is anticipated to operate at level of service F in both peak hours across all scenarios. High side street delay is not uncommon at unsignalized intersections during the peak hours when mainline volumes are highest. Furthermore, it is likely that some of the site traffic that was assigned to use Shady Lane would choose to turn left at the signalized intersection of Mitchell Road and Hudson Road. For these reasons, no mitigation. Staff recommends a conditional approval of the plan with the standard and specific requirements. Conditions of approval are as follows, one, provide a revised preliminary plan removing the open space hatching from portions of the common area J, detention pond, and reroute buffer outside of the detention pond. Update open space totals to reflect this revision. The revised plan must maintain required open space totals. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Ms. Stateen. All right, we're going to be here for a while, apparently. We're going to start with in opposition. Dan Fowler? Come on down. Probably mispronounced it. Each side gets 10 minutes. Now, one person can take all 10, or we got 10 people at one minute, however you want to do it. But you only got 10...
I'll take it y'all, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jim.
No, you only got 10 minutes, give me your name and address, please.
Dan Fowler, 214 Devinger Road.
I got it right.
I take it that y'all are the good guys? I propose that when we were looking at this subdivision plan, that that's going to increase a lot of traffic on Devinger Road, as it already has a good bit. If you've driven on Devinger Road lately, it's like the Indianapolis 500, they speed 55 miles an hour, it's not uncommon on that road. Is anybody familiar with that road at all?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would propose that when you're, if you are going to buy this property and develop it, that you would consider revising where you're going to put your entrance roads, maybe because Devinger Road is a collective road, an emergency outlet road, uh, that you might put a fullway stop sign somewhere on Devinger at Connecticut Drive to deter the traffic speeding on that road there, and, uh... And how, is this a done deal, have you already got this property under contract, the developer, is this a done deal?
Uh, you're supposed to speak in opposition, I, I didn't, wasn't aware you had questions for the developer.
Okay, well, I just wanted to, I just, I wanted to ask that, I don't do this every day, so I'm going to be a little...
Sure, I understand, we'll ask them later.
Okay, all right. And I understand there's a certain amount of acreage that are wet ones there, like five acres, something like that?
Yeah, see the drawing?
What is the, they're proposing to put 100 houses on this property?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Has DOT been aware that this is going to impact the, the impact of that road, Devinger Road, which is already in bad shape?
Well, they had a traffic study, and every, it said no mitigation.
I would hope that they would propose turning lanes, stuff like that, improve that, uh...
Is this a state road?
State road? It is a state road, that is correct.
Okay. You need to call DOT, above my pay grade.
I would call DOT, okay. All right, that's all I've got.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Leslie Schaefer? Ms. Schaefer, oh, okay.
I have a handout I want to give you.
Sure.
Since we're talking about traffic.
Okay.
I live in Merrifield Park, now you know how to cut through our neighborhood, or what's going to happen?
Hand it to her, and we'll pass it down. Give me your name and address, please, ma'am.
My name's Leslie Schaefer, I live at 200 Parliament in Merrifield Park. My husband and I have lived in Merrifield Park for over 26 years, why? Because it's quiet, safe area, and little traffic. Logan Reserve proposal concept drawing across from Merrifield Park on Devinger Road. 100 more homes on tiny 7,000 square foot lots, plus 150-plus more vehicles on Devinger Road, and I assess the current traffic study has been done. Well, as you look at my handout, what's the best way to get to Pelham Road? You cut through Merrifield Park. And it happens every day for Pelham Road School. And I don't understand the emergency access road, what does that mean?
If one of the other roads get blocked, then the fire trucks and EMS can use the emergency exit.
So that road will be totally open to Connecticut?
No, no, it's blocked, it, it's either grass, and they put blocks under it, or they put bushes that don't grow tall enough to where a fire truck can just bulldoze them down.
So they just go four-wheeling through it?
It's an emergency only, if anybody goes four-wheeling through it, you have them arrested.
Okay. So basically, my main point is to cut through to Merrifield Park. You miss four traffic lights to get to Pelham Road. The traffic's already terrible, it's a, Devinger Road is a narrow two-lane road with many blind spots, and where that first entrance is, the main entrance is right over a hill, when you come up over the hill, you can't see the other traffic coming through. So my last comment, I probably can't feed all the critters misplaced by the massive tree removal. That's it.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Kyle Gilli.
Maybe some confusion, I'm Kyle Gilli, I came to speak about Walton Estates, not this one, sorry.
Oh, you signed the wrong thing. All righty, James Ruffner?
You got the right sheet?
I got the right sheet, it says Logan Reserve.
Chairman? Chairman? Um, there was no sign-up sheet provided for Walton Estates, because I didn't believe we would have a public hearing on a reconsideration. I do have one, if you guys do vote to reconsider, we can, that's up to you all.
No, let's, um, I see it now, under subdivision, I apologize. Jim, some long name.
Thank you, sir. I pronounce Winesaddle, like the settling of the wine.
Okay. Well, the first letter threw me.
Thank you, sir, thank you, everybody, appreciate it. I'm, I'm Jim Winesaddle, I live at 18 Chateau Drive in Merrifield Park, and I've been there over 20 years, 25 years. I agree, the neighborhood's been a wonderful neighborhood, it's been there 50 years, R20 was the zoning back then, now it's changed a lot, but I'm president of the Merrifield Park Community Club, and I represent 275 homes in that neighborhood. And the consensus is that this new neighborhood be opposed for development. Number one is that I consider this a shoehorned neighborhood, opposed to any developer, but you're trying to put 100 homes in a postage stamp, 1.7 zoning, R7, or one, whatever that, whatever I'm trying to say there, but the point is that you're reducing the size down. This whole area was probably originally zoned R20, then it went down to R15, maybe R12, now you're trying to do R7? This is, to me, I require at least a total rezoning of this area. If anything, we would probably accept maybe a 50% reduction of this from 100, maybe to 50, that would cut down on some of the traffic. Right now, we feel like the, the crowding in our, you know, from a traffic standpoint is too much, it'd be, it's the street traffic, I, actually, school sizes would be a problem, too, I think that the density there, no, I don't know who's going to be moving in, but think of the overcrowding maybe in our schools, Pelham Road Elementary, right there. It's not consistent with the other neighborhoods in the area, I think that's another thing I'd be opposed of. I just think the other adjoining neighborhoods, I just think this is a bad, bad idea from start to finish, and I would like for you guys to reconsider, maybe if you, maybe talk about a rezoning, I don't even know what the rezoning is for this area, this is what just they put in. You're on the planning staff, you know, I'm not, this is my first time I've ever come to you guys, I've been to a county council meeting, uh, that wasn't very productive, honestly, with the last cries, um, you know, that Pelham Road and, and Hudson Road was a total disaster, if you recall that, three times we opposed that, and you still got it passed. That's not on you, though. Anyway, I've had enough... Anyway, I've had enough time, I'm sure you've heard it all. We oppose it, like I said, 275 neighbors, consensus is they don't want this neighborhood in there. At least chop it in half. Thank you, sir, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. How much time do we have?
3 minutes, 53 seconds.
3 minutes, 53 seconds for Brad Metcalf.
My name's Brad Metcalf, I live at 300 Bloomfield Lane in Devonshire, been there about 18 years. Grew up at Nineteenth Row Court for- since 1978. Real quick, he just made this comment, this neighborhood does not fit what the current surrounding neighborhoods are. And what I mean by that, the planning that was done back then was fantastic. A lot of interconnectivity of these neighborhoods, you can get in and out three or four different ways. It disperses the traffic throughout these major thoroughfares. I honestly did not realize you could still build a neighborhood with one way in, one way out. This, to me, feels more like a West Georgia Road-type development, and West Georgia Road's been a disaster with the amount of traffic and concentration of traffic that dumps out onto West Georgia Road. This is not a personal attack, Mr. Schaus has been a phenomenal developer in this area for a long, long time. I just personally disagree with this personal- this particular development. You are gonna dump a majority of these houses on traffic, on to Hudson Road, I know they come out on Devonshire, they're gonna go to Hudson. Y'all don't have control over Hudson, I get it. Hudson's 15, 20 years behind, leading a turn lane all the way down to Pelham Road. The traffic count's gonna be disastrous, or it's gonna- it's just gonna make it worse, I guess, is the easy way of saying that.
Okay.
At the end of the day, I had a high school coach, an economics teacher, told me one time, he said, "Metcalf, just because you can doesn't mean you should." And in this case, I just don't think you should be doing this. Thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Hugh Edmonds. What do we got left?
232.
232.
My name is Hugh Edmonds, I live at 6th Connecticut Drive in Merrifield Park, I've lived there for 54 years. We built that house and moved there because of the neighborhood, Foxcroft was there at that time. I don't think that we are totally opposed to this subdivision going in, all you have to do is look and see where houses are being- but 100 houses in that small area is not consistent with the neighborhood- of the neighborhoods at all. Either Foxcroft, Merrifield Park, Devonshire Place, we're not opposed to that, but we are opposed to the fact that it's 100 houses in there. It's certainly not consistent with the neighborhood. Another, we've talked about, or had talked about, the traffic on Devonshire Road, also the traffic on Hudson Road. And as I said, I live on Connecticut Drive, so that's one of the main exits, where we imagine we'll have a lot of traffic going through that way. We also have a drainage problem in that area. In the recent heavy rains that we've had, we've had significant flooding. I don't know how the drainage will be happening in this area. I see that they have retention ponds there, and that's a good thing, but where do they go after? We have retention ponds now. My house has been flooded twice. And the retention ponds don't do the- granted, we've had some excessive rains this spring, and who's to say we won't have it? But we're very much opposed to the number of units, or the number of houses in this area, and I think I speak for everyone in the neighborhoods that I've mentioned. And I thank you for your time.
I have a quick question for you, if you stop the clock. Did the developer ever have a community meeting with you all?
Not that I know of, no, sir.
Okay. All righty, thank you, sir. Don Frazier? What do we got?
I'll be quick. Don Frazier, 222 Devonshire Road, I'm right across the street, middle of the subdivision proposed. They're proposing a road right across from my drive and my neighbor Bob Gottschall's road. So, and if you look left and right, there's blind spots either side of that road. I don't know who did the traffic study, but they'd go sit in that lot and try to pull out of there if people driving 55 miles an hour on that road right now. So, you're not getting out. Number two, there's a stormwater runoff drain right at the edge of the property. It- heavy rain, it flows four inches of rain flooding through there. I just don't see when you clearcut that lot, there's gonna be any way, tons of detention areas to be able to eliminate that. That's another problem. And then, I guess that's two of the biggest things I see being a problem.
Okay.
All right? That's all I got.
Great, thank you. Y'all done good, 10 minutes. All right, those in favor, Kevin Tumblin.
Kevin Tumblin, Freeland and Associates, 323 West Stone Avenue, Greenville, 29609. I'm the engineer on the project. Today, we've got the pastor from Edwards Road Baptist Church, he wants to say a few words, and we've got the builder, Brian Lazarus with LS Homes, they're the local builder out here. He's gonna say a few words, too, so I don't want to take up too much of their time. I'm happy to answer any technical questions, and I had some things to say, but I've kinda changed gears a little bit here with some of the comments. I'd also like to mention that our traffic engineer's here, if we have any specific questions for them. The site, going back to the cluster stuff, the site's owned R12, I think this is a really good cluster site.
I'm sure you do.
Yeah, it's owned R12, it would allow up to 134 lots, we're only requesting 100 lots. And we've got more than 35% of the property that's not in houses, roads, or detention ponds. But I'd like to read real quick, just the ordinance, in regards to how much open space you actually show on these plats, it says 11.3.2A says, "Only the required acreage to meet the cluster requirements shall be identified as open space." So, if you're required to have 5.59 acres, you can only show 5.59 acres. So, that kinda goes back to that previous development. The rest has gotta be open, common area, or whatever else you call it. So, it's a little deceiving just to say, "Well, they only met the requirements," because that's what the ordinance makes us do. Site distance, we're good there, we checked that. 55 miles an hour, we can't, obviously, we can't control that, that's not the speed limit of the road. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions, technical questions, and I guess I could come back at the end, maybe, so I can give these guys time to talk. So, I'll turn it over to Brian Lazarus now with LS Homes.
All right.
I'm Brian Lazarus, 12 Wade Street in Greenville, South Carolina. I just wanted to state, as the builder, LS Homes has been building and developing Greenville County for 40 years. Subdivisions we have developed or built in the immediate Devonshire and Hudson area include Tuscan Woods, Carisbrook, Brighton, Thornhill, and Thornblade. Our research, verified already from a list of interested neighbors, shows that the area is aging out and is in need of more walkable, maintenance-free, main-floor living with front and rear porches. Many of the surrounding homes are 40 to 50 years old and need renovation with large, hard-to-maintain yards. Many of these homes, many of these homeowners are wanting to make a change but are frustrated with no options within their community. This is exactly the market we are trying to address here at Logan Reserve. These folks want to stay in the neighborhood, and this product will allow them to do just that. This specific market overwhelmingly desires walkability, social interaction, and gathering together. We are addressing this desire as we have successfully accomplished on several occasions before within this county, with multiple open spaces in the form of pocket parks, sidewalks on both sides of our streets, and meaningful open spaces. In addition, this demographic has been shown not to burden county services and road traffic near- nearly the same as traditional family housing. These folks typically do not drive at peak hours, nor add to school congestion. We appreciate the churches and counties' confidence in us to improve this location for the surrounding community, and build a community they can benefit from and be proud of for many years to come. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Who's- Evan McFarland? Okay.
Good evening, my name's Evan McFarland, I serve as the lead pastor at Edwards Road Baptist Church, and it's an honor to get to speak to you guys today, speak on behalf of our church, who has been in the community for over 60 years, and for the last, over the last 20 years, we've owned this portion of the property. Over the last several years, our church has been faithful and diligent to pray, considering how to best steward this resource that the Lord entrusted to us. And so, this hasn't been a quick or a light process for us. And we knew that if we were to go forward to sell any portion of the property, it needed to align with our long-term mission, and also for the best of Greenville, and to serve our community well. And so, I wanted to just let you know of a few key factors that we had as we walked through this process. First, the purchase of this portion of our property will go directly to fund a much-needed renovation for our current church facility on Edwards Road. It will serve our, better serve our now-growing congregation that we have there, and also our surrounding community. And so, this sale helps us move forward with our ministry efforts. Second, we're also retaining, as you saw earlier, a good portion of this property for our uses. That side of the property currently has a soccer field and a mission house, that's housing a missionary family from India right now. Many community organizations utilize our soccer field as a service to the community. We don't know, long-term, exactly what we'll do with that portion of the property, but it's not a piece that we plan on flipping or using. It will be mission-focused, what we plan to do there, that's why we are retaining that portion of our property. That was a huge desire to us throughout this entire process. We- our team had a great heart, and our church had a heart to be a good neighbor throughout this process. And so, that led us to select an offer and a developer that we knew that we could trust. We had many, many offers, and much interest on this portion of the property, but we intentionally prayed and walked the process slowly, so that we could partner, we believed it was important to partner with someone who was local, who had the best interests of our community in mind, so that we could see the neighborhood thrive. They've been so helpful, transparent, respectful throughout this entire process. Lastly, I would tell you, I want to note that our church was presented all of these details that we've talked about, the details of this proposal, and our congregation voted overwhelmingly in favor of it, 97% in favor of this plan for our church and our property. That unity reflects the confidence of, we believe this is the right direction as a church. So, I'm grateful for your time and overseeing these projects. I believe this development will help us as a church continue to serve Greenville well, to continue to move forward in our mission. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. How much time?
4 minutes.
Brett Hancock. 4 minutes.
Brett Hancock, 414 Renison Drive, Greenville, South Carolina. The only thing I would add, the perspective I would bring, is I've served on the committee for the last year, as we evaluated what to do with a portion of the property. We met with many, many developers and builders, many of them wanted to do a much higher-density project there, they wanted to change zoning, and we were adamant that we didn't want to do any of that. We cared deeply about what was gonna go on that portion of the property. We're retaining 20 acres that, as our pastor just spoke, that we plan to keep for recreation, that we're already providing for the neighborhood with one soccer field, but also other, some other ministry opportunities there. So, we didn't come by this lightly. The committee that I served on, we spent a year going through all of this and selecting, ultimately selecting LS Homes and their offer for the property. So, I just, again, we- we plan, we're gonna be a neighbor to this, to this subdivision ourselves, so we obviously care deeply about what it's, what's going there as well. We cared, we wanted to be a good neighbor. They will tell you, that I said over and over, that we wanted to be a good neighbor to this neighborhood. I ride by there all the time as well, so we didn't want to do anything to disrupt that area of Greenville. So, that's just my perspective from being on the committee for the last year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I guess we're back to the engineer. Was there anyone else that didn't sign up? I got a quick question for staff. Well, no, if you had a presentation, finish off the time.
No, I'm good. I'm happy to answer questions, though.
Can you put a retention pond in an undisturbed buffer? I've never seen that before.
I think you're referring to the hatching that goes across the pond, which is just a drafting error, and she mentioned that in her comments, that that would be-
No, you have-
-need to be removed.
You have the undisturbed buffer through the retention pond, don't you?
There's some hatching through a portion of the detention pond, which is just a CAD error, which she mentioned in her presentation, and it'll clearly be removed.
But isn't it required?
Well, my suggestion is to pull it out and put it around the-
Pond?
Pond, yeah.
Yeah, and the detention pond, just so you know, it's, the proposal is for it to be a shared detention pond with the church, just, you know, if they do any, any more work on the site, we've oversized it just to handle some of their stuff.
All right. Commissioners, any questions for the engineer?
Yes, I have a question. I think it was Brian, I think you, Brian had made a comment about some of the people said that they wanted more walkable neighborhoods, smaller lots, so did you, in fact, speak with some of the-
Yes, we met, we met with the Brighton and Carisbrook Association, and talked to the folks that were over in the Devonshire, Devonshire public sector.
Then you said something about demographics.
Hush, please. Not you. That came out wrong, didn't it?
You said something about demographics. What demographics are you referring to, or your target demographic?
Our target demographic typically is somebody that's over 55 years old. This project, it's not defined as that, but it's typically folks, their kids are out of school, so they're not using roads as cut-throughs, there's not soccer moms cut-through, there's not all that. These are folks that are normally tired, or working from home, if they are part-time, so they're not on the road between 7:00 and 9:00, and 4:00 to 6:00, and if you do it with the R12, and you're 63, and you have wider lots, then you're gonna end up with, you're gonna end up with family homes, and you're gonna end up with a lot of teenagers, and you're gonna end up with a lot of, a lot more traffic, in our opinion.
Two more questions, if I might.
Sure. Just, we're not, really, that's not our purview, is their market, so.
I know, but he made a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are there, and this may be more for the pastor, do you, are there any members of the church that are, live in the community, Devonshire, Foxcroft? Do you know? Yes? Okay. All right.
Was that it?
Well, there's one more. Are there, your floor plans, are they one-story, two-story? Have you gotten that far?
There are story and a half and one-story plans. We're still working on those, but a lot of them are previous plans that we've used.
You're right to hesitate.
Thank you.
Any, no, don't give me dirty looks. Look, I have the utmost respect for this developer, and for this builder, and the product. I'm just, this is not cluster. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
I have a question.
You can't ask it.
You are civil engineer, is that correct?
No, you can't ask this question.
Is there an existing sidewalk already on Devonshire Road?
No.
So, basically, you'd be putting in a sidewalk.
On Devonshire?
That goes to nowhere?
I mean, it's-
Did I see it was less than a mile and a half from a school? Sidewalks would be required?
Yeah, we're gonna have sidewalks internally on both sides of the road.
Not ex- oh, they're not required externally, are they?
Are you, Mr. Chairman?
Sidewalks?
They're not required along the main road, just within the-
Right, just internally, that's right.
They're trying to.
Okay. And-
There's no sidewalks in Devonshire.
Our staff's comments, or subdivisions' comments, that we're seeing more frequently about connections to open space, and similar comments, those are not standard comments, those are, those vary from plan to plan, correct?
That's correct.
One more. No traffic improvements were deemed needed, but is that because it's already failing? And there's not a lot we can do to fix it? There's nothing feasible to make it better than failing?
The traffic engineer is here, if you'd like to ask him, or-
You want to call him up, Ms.?
He's coming.
Name and address, please.
Alan Reed with Impact Designs, 220 North Main Street, Greenville. You're asking about the traffic signal at Devonshire and Hudson?
No, I'm saying, I'm just looking at the TIS and, basically, the lack of requirements that came out of it, even looking at the, on the photos, and knowing I've driven those roads, the condition of the roadways.
But you referenced something that was failing, which- But you referenced something that was failing, which, which thing is failing?
It says, yes. Yeah, it says Shady Lane and Hudson Road, eastbound approach is an LOSF. I'm assuming some of the others are on...
That's the, I mean, that's the stop sign at Shady Lane, that because there's so much traffic on Hudson, it, it takes a while to turn left out of there, and that's reflective of the LOSF. But the traffic signal at Hudson and Devonshire, which I think we all expect a large number, the cars coming in and out of here, go through, is overall a B in the morning and a C in the afternoon. The Devonshire Road approach is a lot, is higher because Hudson Road is, the signal at Devonshire, the signal at Mitchell Road are running on a timing plan, so it has to hold green on Devonshire to be able to flush as much traffic down Hudson. So that makes a side street wait time a little longer. And with the addition of the site traffic, the wait time on Devonshire Road is, we estimate, to increase by less than two seconds per car on average, so.
You didn't do your counts during COVID, did you?
We took them in February of this year.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right, I have a question.
Ms. Manning.
Why isn't there more open space? I know that your market is to people age 55 and above. Why is there not more open space, places for people to be able to have opportunity to congregate? I mean, I don't, I don't see much open space here at all.
Engineer?
Basically, it's, we, we've got pocket parks, and we've got spaces that have access to them, that, that we have not figured out exactly what we're going to do with those spaces, but we, they can be, we can make paths. We've, we've got plenty of opportunities for walking in there and, and creating spaces in the, in the, in the space that backs up to Brighton and the space that, there's some space between the lots, between the detention pond on the left side and the turf side.
Well, I only see in terms of open space, I see 20-foot open spaces, a small little pocket here.
The what?
I just, I don't, I see a little pocket park next to number 45.
Somebody get a pair, yeah, we need to put this on tape, so.
Yeah, this, this area over here on the east side of the property, all the green area, is, is open space. Of course, there's, the 20-foot buffer is open space. There's several, again, there's several pocket parks, and there's wetlands and wetlands buffer. Some of that stuff is just labeled as common area and not so much open space, again, because we, it's 5.59 acres required, and that's all we can show is open space.
We understand the rules.
Yeah, we do understand the rules.
But again, your pocket park is point, 0.07, two of them, one of them's .11. That's not much of a park. That's not meaningful proportions in any sense of the word. The rest of it is swamp, and the rest of it on this other side is, it's just not of any dimensions to allow recreation, I believe. And it's undisturbed buffer. A kid can't go in there and kick a ball in a 20-foot wide section. It's undisturbed. So, I mean, yes, they do allow you to use the buffer in your calculations, but...
Well, I just, I just mentioned again that we have more than 35% of the site that's not developed, and if we eliminated the buffer and took it out of the equation, we'd still have about 30% of the site that has not been developed.
Well, that's great. I'm, I'm just in disagreement of your pocket park.
Yeah, I just, I just think that if, if we could have something that, meaningful open space, if, if your market is for people that are retiring, why don't you have more meaningful open space here for people to be able to congregate, to be able to have a sense of community? I mean, you've got these people pretty well sandwiched in here like sardines.
But they're not, we're not supposed to consider the market. Yeah, these are probably going to be patio homes, and that's a great product. I used to build them. But it's still, no, I, you talk about an older person walking all the way to that little green spot where your sewer easement is, I, I just don't see, I'm sorry, I still don't think it complies with 11.4 and 11.32.
Yeah, I don't see it either. I'm sorry.
As Mr. Hammond likes to say. Any other questions for the engineer? Can I get a motion?
I'd like to have a motion to deny the Logan Reserve.
Based on?
Based on inadequate open space, traffic concerns.
11.1, 11.32, and 11.4?
Yes, sir.
All right. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Wood. Ms. Manning made a motion to deny based on the cluster ordinance, those three sections. Mr. Wood has the second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I do have a question.
Go ahead, mister.
For staff. Staff, again, is recommended approval with standard and specific requirements. There's been, in the motion to deny, 11.1, 11.32, and 11.4 have all been specifically referenced.
Yep.
I would like to hear staff's comment on what in 11.1, 11.32, and 11.4 is not in
Specific to those sections?
Yeah, I mean, I...
Ms. Tate, tell, tell him what you sent me. I think that should be sufficient. You remember that email?
I'm ordering it. From last week?
Oh, from a few days ago.
Okay. Regarding developable and undevelopable open space?
No, no, I'm sorry. Where you had said that it's up to the planning commission totally. And you, you quoted these same sentences.
Yeah, so my position on the open space is that I'm checking for the technical amounts and that the correct type of open space is provided as far as whether it is undevelopable or developable. But then it's up to planning commission to determine if it's meaningful proportions.
Well, let's take 11.1, for example. I mean, that, that's a calculation. That's not subjective.
Anything quantifiable calculating, that is something that, that staff is going to say, you know, you meet that amount.
All right. So I, I would ask the person who made the motion to deny and the person who seconded the motion, how is that, how is 11.1 not being met?
The planning commission shall deter, oh, he's asking you. But that's the same thing I've always read. Shall determine if the preliminary plans is consistent with the purpose and intent.
But 11.1 is a table. It is a calculation.
No, it's not. It's 7.1.
11.1 in the LDR?
Yeah, 7.1 is...
7.1?
Try again.
7.1 is a table?
Yeah.
Okay, it's a calculation.
But that's 7.1. We said 11.1.
I know. 11.1 is a sample density table in the LDR.
It's intent.
It's intent. What section you went over?
The density table?
No, it's 11.1, intent of cluster.
It's got 11.1 sample density table showing you what the density is. How, how's the density out of proportion?
No, the planning commission shall determine the preliminary plan is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance related to cluster development.
Again, I'm trying to determine...
Can we call for a motion?
Mr. Hammond, yeah, I, I don't think that's going to change anything.
Was there a question for staff? I think on 11.1, Megan was looking that up. I want to make sure that we get...
Well, 11.1, 11.32, 11.4 were specifically brought up. Staff obviously felt like the application met those three sections. I'd like to hear just staff's explanation of why they, why staff felt like it met those three sections.
Megan is look, is pulling that information up as we speak.
So in regards to 11.1, I mean, that section says that the planning commission is to determine if the preliminary plan is consistent with the purpose and intent. To me, that says that if the numbers are met, and if staff determines that the numbers are met, then planning commission goes through A through E on there to determine that, whether that intent's met. So for 11.1, my opinion is that the planning commission determines that because of the way that, that that's written.
But the guidelines, A through E?
I see A through E.
And then you mentioned 11.3.2. 11.3.2 repeats that same terminology. The planning commission shall determine the appropriateness of the dimensions of the required open space. So as long as they're meeting that number, then I bring forward that application, and the planning commission then decides. So that's where that comes in as well. As far as 11.4 goes, hold on, it went away. Give me just one moment. I consider this one to be a technical section. So from my point of view, I brought this application forward. It meets the requirements listed in A through C here.
The required open space is directly accessible to the largest practical number of lots?
You could, you could weigh in and say that practical is a subjective thing, and therefore that's where the planning commission can insert some...
Yes, ma'am.
Some of their deference with that discretion, I should say. But otherwise, those sections A through C are what I'm saying it meets by bringing this application forward.
All right, thank you.
Would you, while you bring this up, the primary access point, you don't need a primary access point to an undisturbed buffer, do you?
No, it, it should be to an area that, that you can cross through.
Right.
But you could have an access to that area regardless, for maintenance purposes.
Sure. No, I, I agree with that. That's, that's, that's a good point. But again, you know, having an access to an undisturbed buffer, to me, is just sort of, I can't say that phrase, but hog.
I think if there are other obvious spots where you can access the open space, then an additional access is no issue.
Oh, I agree. I'm just saying it's just wasted space. All right, the motion was to deny. Already forgot by who, Ms. Manning. Mr. Wood has a second. All in favor to deny, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Again, denied five, six to three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is PP 2025 57, Monarch Meadows. Monarch Meadows is a cluster option one subdivision proposal located adjacent to the intersection of Garrison Road, which is a state road, and Reedy Fork Road, which is also a state road. The applicant is requesting 38 lots on 38.72 acres for a density of .98 units per acre, which is less than...
Ms. Tate, let's pause for a minute. Would you all please exit quietly? Thank you. Go ahead. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. For a density of .98 units per acre. Access is provided off of Reedy Fork Road and Garrison Road, both of which are state roads, and Mamie Black Road, which is a county road. Monarch Meadows was previously approved by planning commission under case number PP 2024 58 at the April 2024 planning commission meeting. A second application representing one change was approved in September of 2024 by planning commission as well. This current application includes the following changes: a decrease in the overall acreage of the site from 39.14 acres to 38.72 acres, decrease in number of lots from 39 to 38, and the relocation of the entrance to the northwesternmost portion of the development. Here is the site outlined in red, and here is Garrison Road looking east and looking west, and Reedy Fork Road looking north and looking south. Here is the site plan that was submitted in your packets. The project includes two ingress egress points, two internal roads, three lots that front Reedy Fork Road or Mamie Black Road with no internal access, two cluster mailboxes with one pull-off space for one of the CBU areas, and one CBU located within a cul-de-sac, 20-foot screening buffers around the perimeter of the site, appropriate creek buffers of at least 100 feet in width, two detention ponds, 1,647 linear feet of new public road, and 15.6 acres of open space. Here is the zoning of the site. The subject site is part of the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, where it is designated as suburban mixed-use and rural living. The suburban mixed-use character area type recommends a density of six to 20 dwelling units per acre, while the rural living place type recommends a density of one dwelling per two or more acres. Monarch Meadows proposed the density of .98 units per acre. The subject site is also a part of the South Greenville Area Plan, where it is designated a rural preservation area. Rural preservation area types recommend a density of zero to .3 units per acre. Here is the site and across the street from the site. And here are SAC comments provided at the meeting. From SCDOT, previously reviewed and commented on back in April of 2024 and August of 2024, have not received any information answers to questions regarding the development and the previously reviewed mixed-use development that included the residential tract of 12.57 acres. From SCDOT, is Monarch Meadows part of the larger planned mixed-use development, or has the mixed-use development plan been scrapped? Approval of Monarch Meadows access points will impact future development of residential tract. Lots 36 through 38 shall have access from Mamie Black Road, show flags to Mamie Black, or access easements across lots. Depending on whether Monarch Meadows is a part, phase of the previously reviewed mixed-use development, a traffic impact study may be needed and or updated. Staff recommends approval with conditions of the plan with the standard and specific requirements. The approval conditions are as follows. All previous approval conditions are to apply. The, those conditions are as follows. One, provide a revised plan by, I think I might have the wrong date. It should say, it should say June 8th, I believe, 2025, that achieves the following. Driveway access for lots 36 through 39 shown as shared with access provided off of Mamie Black Road. If access cannot be achieved on Mamie Black for any of those lots, they should be shown as open space. A private shared drive may be utilized. Number, number two, note 15, revise to reflect that this is a proposed septic development. And two, provide a letter to Greenville County from SCDOT that SCDOT's questions and concerns about potential planned commercial development have been addressed. If applicable, a master plan should show the proposed access points for these areas. Mr. Chairman?
All right, two folks have signed up in opposition. John Jennings, again, you have 10 minutes total. Name and address, please, sir.
Good evening, sir, ma'am. My name is John R. Jennings. I live at 106 Mamie Black Road, Pels, South Carolina. I guess I have some questions for the developer, and at the end, I have some comments, statements. For the developer, what is the developer's reputation, stability, experience, and track record? What is the quality of their previous project? Will they be, will there be any renovations, restriction, or restrictive covenants? Will there be a HOA? What are the future development plans for the subdivision and surrounding areas? How will this development impact the current neighborhood? And what steps are being taken to mitigate any negative impact? What is the price range and square footage of the homes? Statements. I've lived at 106 Mamie Black Road all my life. That's my grandmother. Mamie Black is. We are generational taxpayers. My grandfather bought that property a long time ago. My mother lived out there, father, when they were living, grandmother, grandfather, aunts, uncles. That property means a lot to me. Any person that won't fight for their way of life is something wrong with them. That's all. I don't have anything against the developer or the owner of the property. I'm just fighting for our way of life. All of us own wells out there. All, everybody out there has a well. There's no sewer line down through there. We getting ready to pack homes in there. Eventually, wells are going to get contaminated. I mean, that's just common sense. If you keep putting seputates, seputates, and retention ponds, you're going to contaminate wells. And then what? We don't have a hydrant on Mamie Black Road. If you want to tap into a hydrant, it costs a fortune because you got to go all the way out to Reedy Fork Road. When I graduated high school, I went in the Marine Corps. I served 30 years in the Marine Corps. When I retired out of the Marine Corps, I ran to become a commissioner. I'm still serving as a fire... I'm still serving as a fire commissioner. So I look at it, I've served my country. I'm serving my county. And I drive the church van on Sunday. I volunteered for the last 10 years. I'm serving my community. I think I'm the definition of service. I just want somebody to consider our way of living. Something eventually is gonna happen. I lay in my bed every night, and I hear wrecks out there. The last time they denied this subdivision out there, it was because of the infrastructure. Nothing has changed. The only thing that has changed with the infrastructure since they denied it the last time is that it's gotten worse. No roads has been widened. No roads has been paved. No lights has been put up. So it just, it baffles me how we have to keep coming up here time after time after time. Even if you win, you gotta come back, and you gotta go through this again. Even if you win.
Sir, may I interrupt you for a minute?
Yes.
We approved it last time. We didn't deny it.
We denied the zoning.
Okay.
And they came back. So you did, you're exactly right, sir. You denied the zoning because they wanted to put a burger joint and warehouses out there.
But we approved this subdivision.
You approved the subdivision.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
I'm not gonna, I think that you denied the zoning, and they came back and said, okay, now we're gonna do a subdivision, and we're gonna delete the burger joint and the warehouses. But this is just ongoing. The infrastructure hadn't changed. I hate that I live in an area where somebody can use my area as the hell they don't want to live in. This gentleman over here said a few minutes ago, West Georgia Road, we don't want another West Georgia Road. That's where I live, over by West Georgia and Reedy Fork. This gentleman over here said Rocky Creek is a nightmare. That's where I live. I live six minutes from Rocky Creek. And they keep piling subdivision after subdivision. Woodmont is already overpopulated. It's a study. It's already overpopulated. I'm a fire commissioner. We've already ran 1,000 more calls this year already than we did last year because we keep putting subdivisions out in our area. Like I said, any man or woman that don't fight for their way of living, something is wrong with them. I like my way of living. I do. I don't have anything against the property owner or the developer. I'm just fighting for my way of living. And I just want somebody to consider, just like that gentleman stood up, and he said, I've been out here for 20 years, and now they want to put a subdivision. And the sad part about it is, most of the developers don't even live here. They come here and screw our areas up, and they go back to Charleston, or Columbia, or Atlanta. I just want somebody that we voted in, or somebody that's from this area, that's on a board, to say, hey, it's time out for letting other people come up here and screw up things for our constituents. That's all I'm asking. Because that's what happened. They don't live out there where I live. They live in a different state. Just consider that. That's all I'm asking.
Thanks, sir. Jim Gilbert.
No comments, that says it all.
All right, that'll work. That's all who signed up in opposition. In favor, Austin Allen.
Austin Allen, Arbor Land is on 49 Greenland Drive, Greenville, 29615. As Megan State and her staff report, again, this project was approved back in August of 2024. The reason we are back in front of you today is, I don't have a laser pointer, but the access on Garrison Road that serves the largest amount of lots did not adequately and appropriately meet site distance requirements per DOT. We have moved that entrance closer to the intersection of Garrison and Reedy Fork Road. In addition to that, one of the lots that would be where the pond is now, kind of on Garrison Road, was flipped to the other side. Again, that is the only reason we are here in front of you today, and I'll be happy to answer any questions in regards to that.
Any questions for the engineer?
Can I have a quick question?
All right.
Chair, I have a quick question.
Yes, Ms. Manning, sorry.
In terms of water pressure, fire hydrants, and what have you, is, how is that being taken care of?
So we've actually got to, there is another subdivision. You see where our stubout is on the west side, planned west, and actual west of the larger side.
Okay.
So that connects through to another subdivision that fronts, drawing a blank on the road that goes in front of Woodmont High School. We are connecting our lines and looping that through to maximize pressure in this area.
And has the fire marshal in this particular area proved this?
Oh, yeah.
Just asking the question.
They wouldn't have made it this far.
Just asking the question.
I didn't see a letter in the packet.
I didn't either.
This has been the sack.
Multiple tops, yes, sir.
Yeah, you mean a fire letter or a water letter?
Any comments from the fire?
They've reviewed it, they've seen it. I don't know if it was included in the packet, but we have comment from them. Yeah.
And they're okay with it?
What fire department is this?
South Bengal.
South Bengal. I don't know where you mean.
No, sir, I think we're covered. Any other questions for the engineer? Like you said, we approved this before they moved the entrance. I mean, there's not much else we can do here except argue about developable and undevelopable.
So how are you correcting? How are you correcting?
So there's not a laser pointer up here, is there?
It doesn't work on this TV, so.
Well.
Throw something.
Well, she may not be able to see that TV. So, yeah, could you take the cursor over to the shared lot line between?
See the cursor on your screen here?
One and two.
Can you zoom in on what's?
So that access point basically came in, the edge of the right of way nearest to the west, shared the property line of what is now the shared property line of lots one and two. The reason, the issue that we ran into is Garrison starts to curve back around. It's not an elevation, there's not a crest in the road. It just starts to curve back around. So your site distance is cut through that property that's pizza-shaped. So previously, where the pond is on the east side of that access road, what is now Lot 1 was Lot 26 in that location. So with the shift of the drive, we flipped the lot to the other side of that road.
Basically, from the left to the right? Side of the road, correct?
From the right to the left. So we pushed the access closer to the intersection of Garrison and Reedy, and flipped the lot from where the pond is now, from the right side to the left side of that access point.
They just moved the entrance for better sight. Are you good, Ms. Franklin? Okay, great. Any other questions for the engineer? Can I get a motion? Can we go to happy hour?
Mr. Chairman moved to approve the application.
Mr. Hammond, thank you, sir. Can I get a second? Ms. Franklin has a second. Again, we've already approved it. They just moved the entrance. Any further discussion?
I voted no last time, and I'll definitely be voting no again for my constituents.
Okay. Well, then, let's do the hand thing again. All those in favor to approve, raise your hand. All those to deny?
Y'all's approved.
Okay, Mr. Bailey was approved. He just forgot to raise his hand. Raise your hand. All right, it passes 5-4.
Chairman, I need a break.
Okay. Five-minute recess, please. Sorry, I was trying to go for it.
Recording stopped.
I know everybody's here.
No, that's, they said that, yeah, that's all that I know. I know I did, because we thought about it, you know. Nothing I can do.
Why don't tell him we approved it? Because everybody's in agreement.
Nothing we can do about it, you know, that.
Did I approve that one or not? Because I don't want to, I don't want to rescind.
I fought with them, fought with them, all of it.
And I'm like, no, I just recently started, started.
This one here, the next one, that right there is gonna be the, it's gonna be, who's gonna?
Here's why I think this. So I talked to the fire chief, the clerk's chief guard, as well. We go back to what I'm talking about. And, um.
Think of it again myself.
So Logan was, this is approved with the what?
This 5-4.
That they use for the fire departments to submit comments is antiquated, is stolen. And each fire district has to pay for a compatible system to work with. And your smaller fire departments, in the smaller areas that don't have enough funding, they can have more than two. Yeah. He also said, and in fact, this property is now back up for sale. One that, I don't believe on, and would, why not? No, one I spent, I, we spent six months working on the developer, and we got what we wanted, darn it. You can't. I mean, I mean, you see there, obviously. This one, this one is looking up. I don't know, I mean, I've looked at, oh, the length, actually, it's not as much as you think, except on those calculations. But you're right. In fact, I was at an HLA meeting about a month and a half ago in a neighborhood off of Skull Town, and they're HLA's, really strict. And so they don't allow curators to enter the road. And one of them, resident, she said, look, I'm still taking. If you start fighting me for it, I'm gonna have to move. She said, we have four cars. We drive those four cars. And her and her husband and her kids. We all drive them. We have nowhere else to park. Oh, yeah, definitely. Definitely, or get starchy. You know? Oh, you want to see John's, John's acron? His commercial acron? He's, he's a pretty, he's a pretty, yeah, but that's a different.
That sounds nasty.
I think there's a, I had a thought about that the other day, but I don't remember what it was. How much acreage total do you have, John?
11.8 acres.
They don't have the right amount of acreage on my advocate. I just talked to them on the way in.
Uh-huh.
He's like, you're less than 10, I'm like, 11.8?
Because he knocked it down because of what they're including as residential and business, right? That your office is in.
They gave that point up. Now they're back to not realizing that the girl and people have identification, and they don't have a modification. As soon as they get their thing together in there, we should be good.
Mr. Holland has to regale himself with the fire.
Yeah, but who did you have to?
Crack that gavel two or three times, I'm just teaching you.
Mr. Holland. Calling Mr. Holland. Really? Do we need Josh? He was outside. Yeah.
Josh is outside.
You've been waiting on you, you were first one in, out.
We don't need Josh, do we? All right. Are we back recording?
Recording in progress.
Oops, okay. All right, our next item on the agenda is the reconsideration of Walton Estates. I first would like to ask, Mr. Barber, he has to recuse himself because he wasn't here last month.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask, what is precedent for that? I don't see that in our bylaws. And do you have something specific as to why you would preclude me from participating?
Because you weren't here. You know nothing of the facts. We need your microphone, too.
My microphone's on.
Okay, we couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
And so that was the reason that I can't participate? Is I would be fully aware of the, of the application having come forward in our packet, our agenda packet?
You heard, you heard. You heard nothing of all the speakers, engineers. I was just told that it would be a good thing.
Is that a ruling from the chair?
That is a ruling from the chair.
I would challenge a ruling from the chair.
Well, that's a first.
It is. And simply just because I want the fellow commissioners to tell me that I, as a fellow commissioner, cannot participate.
Only for this one item, and only because you weren't here.
Well, I'm, I am challenging your ruling.
Okay.
That's what happens next.
I, what's happening? Have you ever run into this? Well, we don't have an attorney, do we?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh.
I actually was not here for a prior application that was put before us for reconsideration and was not asked to recuse myself. If you so remember.
I don't remember. Or I would have said something. You weren't here for that?
I wasn't here for.
I'm just suggesting we don't pick and choose.
I, Mr. Barber, I was totally unaware of that. Sure, I totally disagree, and I challenge this. I mean, I just think you heard nothing of it, so I don't understand why you insist upon, you know, voting on it.
Well, the challenge to the ruling for the chair is that the commissioner would then, but whether you have to be upheld or not to be upheld.
Okay, that's a new one. All right, all those who agree Mr. Barber should recuse himself just for this?
Mr. Chairman, have a question?
Sure.
Mr. Barber, Mr. Barber, a question?
Sure.
Mr. Barber, do you feel you're up to speed on this now?
I do feel like that I am, and if I do not feel that I am, then I will not vote on it.
Okay, thank you.
But again, you weren't present. You heard none of the speakers.
Call a question.
All right. All those who agree that Mr. Barber should recuse himself, raise your hand. All those believe he should vote, raise your hand. Or you all need to go read Roberts. All right, he can vote.
Well, if, and I don't think that's appropriate, to say we all need to go reread Roberts' rules.
I was told by Legal to get him to recuse. So we'll talk about this later.
Well, if it's not in the bylaws, and if you want to make a point, what's the difference in somebody not attending or listening to the public hearing on the recent? If they didn't attend that or don't listen to it, are they disqualified from sitting and listening to zoning cases?
No, because half the time, they're on live stream.
Half the time, they may not be.
You're right. And they can read the packet just like the rest of us do.
And as Mr. Barber could.
Nope. All righty. Under Section 4 of the bylaws, reconsideration. Applicant brings to the attention of the commission new facts, a mistake of fact in the original review, correction of clerical error, or matters not the fault of the applicant that affect the result of the review. We are voting not on the subdivision, but on, did we indeed make an error or a mistake?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we deny reconsideration of Walton.
I make a motion that we deny reconsideration of Walton Estates because I don't believe any errors or mistakes were made by this commission at last month's meeting.
All right, can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Manning. Mr. Holland made a motion to deny the request for reconsideration because no errors or mistakes were made. Ms. Manning has a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All those against, raise your hand. The reconsideration is denied six to three.
Mr. Commissioner, question for the chair?
No.
Thank you.
This is over. Subdivision section, we're now to the planning report.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. So you all have the planning report in your packet. Hope you had a chance to take a look at that. A couple of things, a few things I just wanted to point out. As you can see, we've had a few long-range projects that staff's been working on, either going, ongoing still or have finished. For example, the Piedmont Area Summary Report. We know that document was pretty lengthy, so we've been able to provide more of a summary report for that, to kind of condense that down a little bit. Quick update regarding the recent GPAS Policy Committee meeting from May 12th. There's some additional links in there that you can definitely use to be able to go to see any additional information from that meeting. And lastly, I just wanted to point out one thing, and he's not here. I asked Megan if he was gonna be here or if he was here earlier. I do wanna point out that we do have a new staff member in the subdivision administration department. His name is Darby Hand. He is joining us and bringing a wealth of forestry knowledge with him. He is a certified arborist and he's gonna be helping subdivision doing inspections. You know, as you may or may not be aware, our building inspectors help us out with individual lots and whether or not the trees have been planted, doing their inspections. But we lose a lot in the buffers and screenings and things of that nature. This is where he's really gonna come in and be able to help out staff to make sure that we're getting what you, as Planning Commission body, approved for these subdivisions.
I'll lose you.
Good, thank you.
Will he be helping with Stoneman or Alson?
I will let Megan answer that.
Nah, he should did.
He should did, okay.
No, I could've answered that one.
So, but he's been with us for what, about three weeks, four weeks now, something like that?
Month and a half.
Month and a half, okay. And he's, yeah, he's definitely getting up to speed, so we look forward to seeing what he's gonna be able to do for us, so.
All right, great.
Other than that, if I haven't answered any questions you might have regarding that.
Well, congratulations again.
Thank you.
On being in charge.
Well.
So we can harass you even more.
Well, it's deputy, just for this month.
All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Holland, the ad hoc committee chair for the nominations committee.
Okay, as you may or may not be aware, we will be electing a new chair and vice chair for twenty-five, twenty-six. I had one nomination for vice chair of Mrs. Manning, and I had one nomination for chair of Mr. Bickle. No one else contacted me by email, phone, bathroom, voicemail, any of that. So those are my only two nominations. Does anybody else have a suggestion as we are here? Hearing none, as the chairman of the ad hoc committee, I would make a motion that we approve those nominations as were submitted. Megan has been notified, or I'm sorry, Nicole has been notified. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So.
Second.
So can we vote?
No, you say all in favor, say, vote by acclamation.
All right, well, all in favor of Mr. Bickle as our chair and Ms. Manning as our vice chair for twenty-five, twenty-six calendar year, say aye. Aye. Any oppose?
I'm waiting for one.
Mr. Bailey abstained.
One of them.
The ayes have it. Congratulations to you both. I'm assuming you accept these positions? It's too late now.
Too late now.
That's correct. Thank you for your service.
Update by law committee. My mom had her hip replacement surgery, so I think we're on the go now. She's on the go. So John has volunteered, Frank has volunteered, Steve gave me a, yeah, I guess so, volunteer.
I volunteered.
Okay, so I'm going to get together some thoughts and ideas on us getting together maybe in person, and then maybe we can work on a few things that we see going out of that going forward. If you and Jim and John, if you would like to submit any comments also, I mean, they will definitely be looked at and utilized. And I don't wanna make this just a bylaw committee thing. I wanna make it a planning commission entirety. That was kind of my purpose. So maybe we'll look at it and find nothing wrong with it. Maybe we'll look at it with some of the several things we've had going on in the past, what, year? And see maybe there might be some things we can fix in it.
Past ten minutes.
Well, you have that, too. So we can keep our chair in place. Going forward, who do we contact for information if needed?
Regarding?
Applications, questions about dockets? You know, in the past, it was pretty...
Right. As of right now, you know, when the new plan director is on board and, you know, there'll be quite a lengthy period of, you know, getting this person up to speed. So feel free to reach out to myself. Any subdivision matters, feel free to reach out to Megan. She's the expert in that. You know, I would defer any question to her anyway. But any rezoning matters, feel free to reach out to me or Todd. Todd has been promoted to our deputy zoning administrator.
Okay.
So, you know, he'd be able to answer any questions as well.
Okay, thank you.
I usually just email both of them.
Well, we know you do. You get away with more than we do.
What's wrong with email?
Comes with the territory. Service, years of service.
Sure, I put up with guys.
I wanna thank John and Jim for their service.
Up until ten minutes ago. Why, wasn't he? He wasn't either. Geez.
Can we adjourn?
No.
Oh, you're not.
I'm not through. Any other new business? Any old business? Hearing none, we're adjourned.